Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time I'll call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on November 5th beginning at 7:01 o'clock. I want to thank everyone for coming out to be with us this evening. We'll start our meeting with an opening ceremony. Would you please join Dr. Reich in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. If you would, please take a moment to silence your cellphones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. We'll have, take just a moment of silence, please. First on our agenda this evening is a program from, as you can see, the Bowles Junior High Corral Women. Ms. Johnston, are you? There you are.
Tonight, we're excited to be joined by the Bowles Junior High Corral Women. They will be performing "A Dream Within a Dream" by Gray, under the direction of Jocelyn Epley and Audrey Alato. The Bowles Junior High Choir Program has roughly 250 students. They have seven performing choirs and consistently earn sweepstakes at the UIL contest each year. The Bowles Show Choir has also won the Grand Champion at the Hurricane Harbor Contest. The choir members are very active within the school and many of them are involved in other activities outside of the school. Many choir members are also in pre-AP classes, National Junior Honor Society Student Council, and are star athletes.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening. It's hard to believe that school just started just a few weeks ago. You guys sound great. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, ladies.[402.12][402.12](Laughter) Next on our agenda is a special part of our sec, of our board meeting where we recognize the November 2015 Student of the Month. This month it is from Bowie High School. We've asked Principal Bill Manley if he would step forward and introduce your student, Tariq Otumobe. Close?
All right. Dr. Cavassos, President Sullins, and Board Members. As Principal of the high school with over 3,000 students, it's always an honor to recognize and celebrate the achievements and contributions of those students. We have team recognition, organization and club recognition, and individual student recognition. Once a month, you as the school board recognize an outstanding senior from AISD High School. As Principal of Bowie High School, I'm privileged to be in attendance tonight with Tariq Otumobe. Tariq is a very talented student who has a strong positive impact on the Bowie campus. Tariq began earning his high school credits while still in junior high by taking Gateway to Technology. And after he began his high school career at Bowie, he challenged himself by taking pre-AP and AP courses and has success, successfully completed pre-AP English 1 and 2, pre-AP Chemistry. And he's also completed Advanced Placement, English Language and Composition, AP Studio Art, and AP US History. While taking a challenging academic course load, Tariq was also a Bowie student athlete and involved in student leadership at Bowie as a member of the Student Council. Tariq is also very involved with activities outside of academics at Bowie and in his community. He has participated in the Bowie Gives Back, an event where students go out into the neighborhood and clean up trash. Tariq has also been a participant in Bowie's Annual Spookapalooza, a fun, safe carnival atmosphere for elementary age students. In addition to all of these activities, Tariq also maintains employment and somehow still finds time to serve, to serve on a mission trip through St. Andrews Church. As you can see, Tariq is a well-rounded student and citizen of Arlington. There's still an area to discuss that his passion, that is his passion and his true talent, though. Tariq has been recognized with multiple awards and certificate, certification, certificates that include the Start of a Fire Award, Imagine No Violence Art Contest Award, the Top Two Artists Award, an Art Lesson Scholarship, and Spirit Award. Tariq has utilized all of his varied skills and talents to embark on something that he's truly passionate about. His career objective is to become a leader in the future of fashion design and art education. He's already utilized these skills, coupled with his entrepreneurial spirit, as one of the founding members of the Eden Apparel line of clothing. Many words could be used to describe Tariq, but I would like to share a few that he has chosen to represent himself. I'm a visionary and creative genius. I have the confidence in myself and my abilities to make a dream into reality. Even though 1,000 people may be willing, may be telling me not to open my eyes, I'm a fighter of perception. I refuse to be weighed down with invisible barriers that stand in my way, barriers that hinder doing what I love and my desire to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Manley, for coming this evening, and I can imagine the difficulty of all of the students on your very large campus, and what an honor, Tariq, that they chose one person and they chose you after hearing about it. I can see why. We, when we get to this part, we always like to hear from you to see if you have any remarks for the board or ideas that you would like to share, and certainly if you'd like to introduce people that you have with you this evening or share your plans for the future, we'd love to hear.
Okay, well, first off, I want to thank my parents. I have my mom and my dad right here next to me, and, yes. My mom's an art teacher at Arts, at Seguin High School, so she is truly where my passion and originality comes from. And my dad, in his fighting spirit and his own business, helps me with my entrepreneurship.
That is outstanding. When did your clothing line begin?
It began last year, 2015, and the second semester of 2015.
That's outstanding. So, any plans for the future?
Yes, ma'am, we have a winter clothing line coming out.
Oh, wow. I knew it, I knew it. Well, we are so proud of you, Dr. Cavassos, and I'd like to come down and give you a small token too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tariq, these are trustees pennants that we wear on our clothes, and we know that you would like to design many things with this in mind. We'd like to give one from our Board of Trustees. Thank you. You guys like this?
Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening. And next, we move on our agenda to item, the district-level instructional decision-making new committee members. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Sullins. At this time, I'd like to invite Rick Garcia, our direct, Executive Director of Transformational Learning, to introduce our new DIDC members. And Rick has an opportunity to work with this group often, don't you, Rick?
Sure, we do.
Okay, so, welcome and introduce your members.
You bet. President Sullins, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board, thank you for these few minutes here. In the early 1990s, to comply with the Texas Education Code 11.251, the district established the District Level Instructional Decision-Making Committee, or what we know as the DIDC. This committee is establishing and reviewing the district's educational plans, goals, performance objectives, and major classroom instructional programs, as well as developing and approving district-wide staff development. The 32-member committee consists of teachers, principals, campus-based non-administrative professional staff members, community members, parents, and district-level professional staff members. The committee has four to six regular meetings and called meetings as needed. At this time, I'd like to introduce our new committee members for the 2015-2016 academic year, and they are: Cully Franks, Zakiya Green, Kim Martinez, Jeff Beck, and a good friend of the board, Ms. Kelly Hastings.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, and welcome, DIDC members. We are so grateful for your time and service on this committee, and we look forward to a great year and looking forward to hearing your input and feedback. Thank you. So, next up on our agenda is administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Sullins, and I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for associate principal at Sam Houston High School.
Move to approve? Second.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, thank you. We have a motion to approve by Dr. Reich and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Is there discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees vote on the affirmative. Mr. Hogg and Ms. Mose couldn't join us this evening. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Sullins. This time, I'd like to introduce our new associate principal for Sam Houston High School, Ms. Jaclyn McLendon. Jaclyn attended the University of Texas at Arlington for her Bachelor of Arts in History and Education, Texas A&amp;M University Commerce for her Master of Science, most recently the principal at Foster Elementary, has served as an assistant principal at Shackelford Junior High, an assistant principal at Carter, an assistant principal at Pope, and has also been a counselor and a first-grade teacher. Jaclyn, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Yes, Board President Sullins, board members, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for your vote of confidence. I'd also like to thank Michelle Wilmouth and Principal Benavides for seeing something in me that would connect with what's needed at Sam Houston High School. Man, leaving Foster is hard for me. It's a place that I love, and I want to thank my foster family for allowing me to lead. Man, we've learned a lot, we've grown a lot, and there's good leadership there. We've built leadership capacity, so Foster will do great things. As you know, falcons soar, and they will continue to do so. Dr. Harbrick, thank you so much for your leadership and your guidance. I don't want to keep looking back, but I know she's back there. Thank you for your leadership and your guidance, and we awaited your visits, and so we thank you. Karen Aldrich, you're a rock star. She has been my partner, partner in all things good, and I thank you for your commitment to the foster, to our foster family. She can take hold of a kid down to the individual level, and she never lets go. In fact, she's always over at gun, watching out for our kids, so thank you, Karen, for that. I can't wait to meet and connect with my new Sam Houston family. I will miss my elementary colleagues, but it, it will be a great ride for all of us. As you know, and I did bring my family here, I'd like to introduce them. I have four daughters, one is away in college, and, and so she's here in spirit, that's Jolie McLendon. And here with me today is Alex. Alex, if you would stand. No sitting, stand. Jonna and Jordan. Thank you. I'm so blessed to be their, their mother. They do amazing things, and they amaze me all the time. And when you have a family as large as mine, it takes a village. And we, you know, that old African proverb, it, proverb, it takes a village to raise a family. Well, we also have a village here tonight, and representing our village is my principal, my off-time principal, Selena Kilgore. Donna Thomas, please stand. Donna Thomas. Also, over here is part of our village, and we have Sonia Star Malone. Could you please stand? Janice Kemp, and Nicole Clinton. Nicole works for our district, and she's my niece as well. And so, thank you. These village members never know when they're going to receive the call to serve, and guess what? They always answer. And so, together, we thank you for this opportunity to serve. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to introduce our new Special Education Director, who's already been working in the district, Ms. Corey Gullum. Corey attended the University of Toronto in Toronto, Canada, for her Bachelor of Physical and Health Education, Queen's University for her Bachelor of Education, Auburn University for her Master of Education, and UNT for her Master of Education in Ed Administration. Most recently was the Director for Special Education Compliance in Dallas ISD, has been a manager for special education secondary programs, academic support team specialist, a vocational adjustment coordinator, has been a special ed teacher, and has taught self-contained grades nine through 12. And so, Corey, congratulations, welcome. I know you're already working. Anything you'd like to say?
Well, thank you, and President Sullins, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Cavassos, for allowing me to be here today and granting me this wonderful opportunity. And I wanted to thank Dr. Wertz for giving me 30 minutes of your time today. I didn't know I had that much time on the agenda. I'm just teasing, because I think you know what I mean. It's an honor to be able to serve for the Arlington School District, and it is with great excitement that I have joined such an enthusiastic, results-driven team. The ability to support the team's talents for the benefit of the students in Arlington ISD is very uplifting. I embrace the challenge to build capacity and create a culture of excellence. Coming from a high-value, high-expectations background brings the ability to share systematic processes that ensure a seamless delivery to help our team reach their full potential. There has been a shift from providing students with disabilities with access to a shift to what we call now progress. You know, years ago, it was just, we wanted to just get them in the school system. Then it was getting them in the general ed environment, providing access. Now, our goal is to brought, not just get them in the classroom in a general ed environment, but to deliver progress for our students, so that they can be in that general ed environment. In order to achieve this, the department goal is to provide the team with the best tools possible, so that they may guide our campuses, students, and families appropriately to improve outcomes for all learners. So, I'd like to thank Dr. Stephen Wertz, and I'd like to thank Ms. Paula Long, and especially the whole special ed team, which I think they're behind me somewhere, because they've so graciously, what, you know, put me into their home, and I mean really into their home. And it is with great appreciation that I humbly accept this position, and I look forward to making positive contributions to this whole organization. Thank you so much.
And as is our custom, we ask that the appointees follow Mr. Cale to the lobby for receiving lines, so each of us can meet you and welcome you. If the audience would please let the board go first, we'd appreciate that, and we will take a 10-minute break and return shortly after 7:30. Thank you. Next on our, our agenda, we have a public hearing. So, we will open our public hearing on the schools first, the state financial accountability rating. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Sullins. And the Texas Education Agency has released its 2015 financial accountability ratings for all Texas school districts. State law requires that each school district hold a public hearing to discuss its rating and to invite public comment on the rating. Tony Drolinger, our Executive Director of Finance, will present a report to our financial, about our financial accountability rating, and then following his report, we will invite a public comment. Tony Drolinger.
Thank you. President Sullins, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. I am here tonight to talk about the School First Report and our Financial Management Report. School First is a system that the state designed to hold account, school districts accountable for the quality of our financial management practices. It's designed to encourage districts to manage our financial resources better so that we maximize the impact in instructional areas. It also creates transparency and discloses the quality of the decisions that we make as a board and as administration over our finances. School First is an acronym. It stands for the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. The rating for 2015 for AISD is past, and the rating last year for 2014 was superior achievement. And at first blush, those two ratings, the contrast in those two ratings, look a little alarming, but it's because the system changed dramatically in 2015. And I think the best way to explain that is to look at, at where the system came from and where, where we are today. So, the system was first authorized by the Texas Legislature in 1999, and it remained pretty consistent all the years up until now. House Bill 5, which was passed by the legislature in 2013, changed the system dramatically. And what it did was, it, it told the commissioner to start including indicators to test a school district's financial solvency. Now, we've always filed a survey with TEA about our financial solvency. It was a system outside of this system, just a survey. It asked a series of questions that weren't that robust, and they weren't really that telling. For example, we had to report our general ledger operating expenses. We had to tell whether or not we defaulted on debt. We had to indicate whether or not we needed short-term financing from the first of the year till the time TEA started, we started receiving state aid payments. One of the more interesting questions on that system was, it asked school districts to disclose any information we deemed pertinent to TEA determining if we were going under. And so, that's one I always left blank, and that was an acceptable answer on that survey, so that was good. So, with the changes, and the drastic changes that came about, TEA is phasing in the new system over three years, and 2015 is the first year of this phase-in period, and it begins on the 2015 rating worksheets. And so, because of that, that's why you saw that the 2015 rating was passed, and we'll look at the ratings here in just a minute. But, but the worksheet contains seven indicators for 2015, and then going forward in 2016 and then 2017 and beyond, it contains 15 indicators. And it's based on an analysis of staff and financial data for 2015, and then in 16 and 17, because the system does become more robust, it starts pulling in student and staff ratios and starts looking at some of that information as well. And all of the systems are based on data from the most recently completed year, so really, it's like two-year-old data. So, for 2015, as y'all are aware, we're bringing the 2014-15 audit report to you at the next meeting, so that's not available. So, the 2015 rating is based on 1314. So, the ratings that are available again for 2015, because of, it's the first year of the transition, there's only two ratings. One has passed, and basically the others didn't pass. And then 2016 and 2017 and beyond, then we get back into some of the, the ratings that you're more used to seeing. And TEA is going to a letter rating system, A, B, C, or F, but it basically is the same ratings that we've had in the past. One of the other differences that I wanted to point out was in 2016, which is the second year of the transition, it includes the same 15 indicators that are in place for the following years. But next year, in order to get the higher rating, the scale's different. It's a little bit broader scale. So, in order to get superior achievement next year, we have to score between 70 and 100 points. But then in 2017, we have to score between 90 and 100 points to get that same rating, to get the highest rating. So, it is definitely becoming more rigorous. Also, in conjunction with the system, we're required to issue a financial management report that is available here tonight. It has to include the school-first evaluation from TEA. It has to include last year's results, and then disclosures of certain transactions involving the board and the superintendent. We also have to hold a public hearing, which we're doing this evening, and we have to make the school-first evaluation available, and it is available- make the School First evaluation available, and it is available here tonight in the form of the Financial Management Report that's at the back of the boardroom. It's also available online after tomorrow, after the hearing, so tomorrow it will be posted online. And then T E A also has the ratings on their website for all school districts. So at this time, I would take any questions, and it would also be appropriate to invite public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Drolinger. This evening, we have no comment cards from the audience, and no indication of comments now, so thank you very much for your report and your presentation. The public hearing on schools first, the state financial accountability rating is now closed. So next, we will open our public hearing on targeted improvement plans for improvement required campuses. Adams Elementary and Berry Elementary targeted improvement plan for the second-year improvement required I R campus. Wemish Elementary and targeted improvement plans for formerly improvement required campuses. Newcomer Center, Sam Houston High, and Webb Elementary. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Sullins. And this time, I'd like to ask Tracy Brown, our Area Superintendent, to begin the presentation for the public hearing.
Good evening, President Sullins, members of the board, and Superintendent Cavassos. Here to talk about our public hearing for our school improvement, for our improvement required schools for year one and two, and those who have made it out, and they are now formerly improvement required schools. In just a couple of moments, you'll be able to hear from the principals themselves, to talk about their specific plans and strategies and supports to be able to move their campuses forward. I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about the achievement standards, the sanctions that have been imposed by the state when your school does meet, if your school does miss the targets, the plan for improvement, and of course, public comment on our targeted improvement plan. So looking at the standard levels of achievement for 2015, the state gives us a rating based on four performance indices. So we have index one, student achievement, the overall student achievement across all content areas that are tested, STAR and E O C. Index two, which is our student progress, looking at the students and how they progress from one year to the next. Index three, closing the performance gaps, and there we're looking at our low socioeconomic students compared to our two lowest ethnic groups and their performance over time. And then index four, of course, is our post-secondary readiness. The elementary, junior high, and high school targets are all different for those. So the state does expect for each of our campuses to meet every single index. This past year in 2015, it's possible that a school could meet either index one or index two, but they still need to meet three and four. So today, we're going to talk to you about the schools who did miss one or more of those indices and their plans for improvement. The other part of the accountability system is the system safeguards component. The state does expect for all of our student groups to perform, and for all of our student groups to be able to make progress. And so you'll hear from our schools today for the schools who, the student groups who did not meet the sixty percent system safeguard in reading, reading and writing are combined, mathematics, science, and social studies. And so if there is a student group in any one of our campuses who does not meet the sixty percent threshold, the school is required to put something in our improvement plan to target that particular student group, to ensure that we're targeting our support to improving their performance. So talking about some of the sanctions for a year-one campus, it is the same for a year-two campus, and we do have two year-ones and one year-two. So I'll go over these just once. We're going to create the campus leadership team that has already been developed, that consists of the principal, the P S P, which is the professional service providers, and we have a few of those who are here today. If you could just raise your hand, so we can acknowledge you. We have Dr. Paramore, and we have Gay Hill, who are here. They both have done work in Arlington before, and they are approved by T E A to provide technical assistance to our schools who are struggling. They also work in common, in conjunction with the area superintendents, and we serve as the internal monitor to work with the external support and the principal to develop the plan, to ensure that it's targeted and strategic, and we'll be able to move our campus forward. So we create the team, we conduct a needs assessment based on the data that we've had from our 2015 assessment, and then we conduct a data analysis to determine what our next steps are in improving the school's performance. So from there, we create our targeted improvement plan, which is what you're going to hear about today from the campuses. This, of course, is our public hearing, and we'll be seeking board approval of our targeted improvement plan. And then, once we get approval from the board, we will submit our plan to T E A, and then every quarter, the professional service provider, the internal monitor, which we call our D C S I, and the principal leadership team, we determine how much progress we've made over the quarter. We meet quarterly goals, and if we're not meeting them, we kind of figure out what we need to do to kind of tweak those, to make sure that we can submit to T E A that we are on track to meet the goals that we've established for our campus. So these are the predicted sanctions if improvement goals are not achieved. They're predicted, because right now, we're still waiting for some information from T E A that we might not get into early January, early spring of 2016. If a school does not meet performance targets in year two, which will be Wemish that you'll hear from later, they will continue to engage in the T A S process, which is the improvement process, and we're still waiting for our turnaround plan from T E A. We don't quite have that yet. If a school does not meet in year three, we will continue. This is when we'll implement a reconstitution plan, we'll look at staffing considerations for a school that doesn't meet the standard in year three, and it's possible that we would have to go before the commissioner to share our plan with the commissioner, or his or her designee. Years four and five, we continue the improvement planning process. Again, additional sanctions are possible. We don't know what those might be yet, but we don't want to find out what those are. And then in year six, we discuss campus closure or alternative management. So these are the predicted sanctions for those schools who don't quite meet the target in year two, three, four, five, or six. So now, I'm going to take a moment to hand over to a couple of our principals. You're going to hear first from Principal Leslie Rhodes at Adams Elementary School, then you'll hear from Larry Beaver at Berry Elementary School, and then Carrie Pride at Wemish Elementary School.
President Sullins, other members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. For the 2015 school year, as it has been stated, we have been identified as an improvement required campus. Adams is very fortunate to have a very diverse population consisting of about eight hundred and ninety-three wonderful students, about thirty-nine percent African-American, thirty-seven percent Hispanic, fourteen percent Asian, and ten percent white or two or more races. And we also have an asset of having approximately nine different languages spoken amongst our students and our parents. And looking at our data... I'll push the button. Okay. And looking at our data, although we did not meet index one, and it did not cause us to be improvement required, we still recognize that we have some growth in that area. However, index three, which deals with closing the achievement gap, did cause us to be an improvement required campus, which meant that we had a gap between our African-American students, our Hispanic students, and our economically disadvantaged students. The target was twenty-eight, and at Adams, we made a twenty-one. And looking at our system safeguards, this report takes a look at the performance of all of our subgroups in reading, math, writing, and science, and also test participation. We were able to meet the participation criteria in all subgroups. We were also able to meet the goal in Asian reading and in E L L reading. With the support of Dr. Hallbrich and Dr. Paramore, our campus stakeholders and district support personnel, we've been able to develop a targeted improvement plan to focus on improving the academic performance of all of our subgroups in all content areas. Again, we did not meet index one, which therefore, again, it did not cause us to be improvement required. However, we do realize that it's very crucial that, as a campus, that we meet the target of sixty percent across all subgroups and all subject areas. Index three did cause us to be improvement required, and so we're focusing on, as a campus, on making sure that we meet both of those indices. How are we going to do that? We have been very intentional in the selection of not only programs, but also professional development. However, based on research by What Works in Schools, it has been said that more can be done to improve education by improving the effectiveness of teachers more than any other single factor. And so we are committing our time and efforts to improving, technically, our human capital, the growth of our staff, and that's not only teachers, but also our administrative team. We know that there is not one perfect program. Therefore, when the program is not perfect, we have to make sure that teachers are aware on how to tweak and meet the needs of our students regardless of the programs and interventions we're using. So let's take a look at three areas that we're going to really focus on, or have been focusing on, as far as developing our staff. First of all, we're focusing on the alignment to the rigor of the student expectations. What does that mean? At Adams, when we talk about rigor, we talk about the level of thinking required in order for students to meet a particular state standard. And in doing that, we make sure that we are intentionally lesson-planning, planning in a way that teachers know that without a doubt, we're meeting the S Cs. For example, in our last P L C, or a few P L Cs ago, we were talking about a particular S C, such as identifying characters. The teachers had worked hard to plan those lessons, but when we looked deeply at that particular S C, we found out that the S C not only had the students identifying characters, but also identifying perhaps the changes that the characters undergo. Why is that important? If we just focus on the part of the S C, it could perhaps hinder our students from meeting the mastery level for the S C. So we're focusing on planning. We're also focusing on being intentional with delivery. That's looking at delivery of not only the class as a whole, but looking at the subgroups that we have identified on our campus, and also making sure that we monitor the progress, not waiting to a district assessment, but monitoring daily in our formative assessments, our campus-based assessments also. The next important part of our professional development is engagement. We realize that we have to have all of our students actively engaged in the learning process. That means we're focused on making sure students have different ways to respond, more so than what we're accustomed to as far as hand-raising, things of that nature. So we have students engaged through the use of technology, through multiple response strategies such as whiteboards and things of that nature. We're also focused on content discourse. When we talk about content discourse, we're making sure that students are talking about the academic language, or using the academic language amongst their peers and also with teachers. And last but not least, positive behavior intervention and supports, P B I S. We do understand that when students make wrong choices, perhaps, we have to focus on focusing on the positive things that students do, and so we focus on making sure we provide attention to those. Also, cultural awareness, that since we do have a diverse population, we're making sure that we know how to meet the needs of students, and also building relationships with all students on our campus and being intentional about it. And last but not least, looking at the analysis of antecedents. What does that mean? That means when a behavior comes about, we look at what perhaps caused that behavior, so we can be proactive next time in keeping that behavior from happening, therefore not impeding the learning of the students. We're going to monitor the effectiveness of our implementation by looking at district curriculum assessments, campus-based assessments, district reading assessments, instructional rubrics that we have through the district and through the state, evaluation of student work samples to make sure they are aligned to the S Cs or the rigor level of the S Cs, walkthrough data, and of course, our final STAR data for next year, or for this year. Do know that we will continue to work diligently in making sure that we meet the needs of all of our students at Adams Elementary School. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, President Sullins, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I'm Larry Beaver, the principal of Berry Elementary School, and I'm going to be sharing the information as far as how we're going to improve this school year, so we will no longer be classified as improvement required. So we also fell into the improvement required category because of our scores, our results on index three. The target score was twenty-eight. At Berry Elementary, we scored twenty-seven during this last school year. The system safeguard report indicates that, thank you, out of the, all of the areas that were considered during the last school year, as the board is aware, the math tests were not considered at the elementary level due to the implementation of the new student scores or the new T E Cs for math. So the areas that were considered, our Hispanic population and our English-language learners did meet the standard, and the other areas that are indicated there in the system safeguard report unfortunately did not meet the standard. So our leadership team, working with our professional service provider, Dr. Paramore, and under the supervision of Tracy Brown, came up with some targeted strategies that we felt would help our campus be successful and have the biggest return on our efforts. Our first goal is that sixty percent of all students will meet phase-in to level-two satisfactory standard in writing during this school year. And although this goal, this measurement, writing is only tested in fourth grade at the elementary school level, we recognize that at Berry, it has to be a campus-wide initiative. So as we go into some of the strategies that we're using to help our campus improve, I'll share that information with you. So the strategy that we will be using includes the A I S D literacy framework to develop and implement a systematic and aligned program of writing instruction across core content areas. So it's not only going to be a language arts issue, we're having all of our teachers in math and science. Social studies also are going to be involved in the writing process and the writing improvement. We're going to be focusing on teacher improvement, teacher modeling of writing. Our leadership team looked at where we are and considered some of the programs that were available for us, and we decided that the Write Traits program would be the one that would be most effective for us where we are at this point, and our teachers in kindergarten through sixth grade are going to be using this program to help our students improve. We'll also be using the Writing Essentials book that was written by Reggie Routman, and once again, the emphasis there is on teacher modeling to make sure that the students have plenty of opportunities to see quality writing and incorporate those skills. We'll be using vertical and horizontal professional learning communities. Our teachers will be trained on how to score the students' writing samples, and the evidence of effective implementation to make sure that we are doing our job, and so our students will be successful, include the district curriculum assessments, walkthrough data, targeted instruction plans. And our second goal includes that all students, student groups will meet or exceed the phase-in two, sixty-five percent phase-in two satisfactory standard in reading during this school year. And how we're going to get there is to train our teachers to effectively assess, monitor, and use the reading performance data, and to deliver targeted and differentiated instruction. Here are some more of the professional development and interventions we're going to use to help our students improve. The district has adopted the I Station program as the universal screener this year. However, we felt that we also needed to have some assessments that could happen more frequently, so we're using running records, because the I Station provides information on a monthly And this is some more evidence of effective implementation, more targeted instruction plans for all of our students, monitoring the students' growth on the D R A, E D L, and I Station, and of course, the STAR results will be the ultimate measure. Goal three is focusing on both index three, as well as all of our economically disadvantaged students at Berry Elementary. That is our largest group. Typically, it's about ninety-three percent of our student population that is identified as economically disadvantaged, so we know that if we can get them to improve, then the entire campus will improve. So our goal here is to have the twenty-five percent of the economically disadvantaged students meet level three, advanced in reading, ten percent in writing, and fifteen percent in math. The strategy that we'll be using includes implementing a process for designing, delivering, and monitoring the alignment of classroom instruction to the rigor of state standards, and this is how we're going to intervene and develop our plan here. We'll be using data digs, and by data digs, data digs is when we look at the data from either the STAR test or curriculum assessment and break it down to the individual student level to make sure that our students are growing. And this is the evidence of the effective implementation that we'll be using to help our students grow. So on behalf of the students, the faculty, and the parents of Berry Elementary, I thank you for your continued support, and I look forward to being back here a year from today and letting you see the good results that we had. Thank you.
Cavassos, some board members, good evening. I'm Carrie Pride, principal at Wemish Elementary. Wemish is a great campus. It's very diverse. I think that's one of our great strengths. We are fifty percent African-American, thirty percent Hispanic, twelve percent white, and eight percent other two races, Asian, Indian. Last year, for the accountability, well, for the accountability of 2014, we celebrated a 10% increase in index two student progress. But we are still improvement required due to index three of closing the achievement gap. Sorry. Okay. I think y'all have already been through this. Okay, there we go. So on index three, 28 was the score needed to meet expectation. And Wemish had a 26. And on our system safeguards, Wemish met expectation in Hispanic and white reading, but did not meet the other system safeguards. So for our targeted improvement plan, the first goal I put was the index three, which caused us to be improvement required to close the achievement gap for economically disadvantaged African-American and Hispanic students. And I went ahead and listed what the scores were and what our goals are. And this also addresses all the system safeguards. But the student groups that were close, we wanted to be a minimum of 65% or better this year. And for the ones that scored lower, we wanted to set a goal of 60% as the minimum in all tested subjects. And our plan for improvement is the work that we do in the PLCs, which is the collaboration of the teachers looking and analyzing their assessment data, which is multiple, multiple data that we're looking at. We're looking at curriculum assessments. We're looking at campus-based assessments. The istation that was mentioned earlier, which is the screener, reading screener, student work. We also have Read 180 and System 44, which is an intervention that also addresses skill gaps that the students have in reading, whether it's decoding or phonemic awareness and that sort of thing for the older kids. Because a lot of times, those things aren't taught in the upper grades like they are in the primary grades. And that helps, that will help us looking at all those different types of data to know what our individual students need. We have curriculum specialists that are working with us. We also have some outside consultants that are working with us with targeted plans for each of the tested subject areas. And that's very exciting. Some of the professional development that we've already had include balanced literacy, guided reading, LLI, which is leveled literacy intervention, math build instructions, math solutions, and journaling with math and science. One of the common components in all of these different staff development trainings that we've had is the structure of small group instruction as well, where the teachers are able to, in all these different subject areas and strategies, to have those small groups and work with the students, giving that small group instruction and seeing the various needs of the individual students. And one of the very things I'm excited about with the professional development that we've had this year is that it's ongoing and it's job embedded. It's not just getting staff development and then go and do. It's here's the staff development, and then we're coming on your campus. We're following up. Here's what it looks like in your classroom with your students. There's modeling, there's observation, and there's debriefing. And that's ongoing through the year. So it's not just a one-shot and go and do. And so very excited about that. The teachers have been very excited about that too, to see what that looks like on our campus with our needs. And the evidence of that is the walkthroughs, the lesson planning, the collaboration, the talking, the observation, the debriefing, all the things, the data analysis, and ultimately, the assessments, and then ultimately, the STAR test. And then our second goal is we want to address index one. We did not meet index one, even though this year it was index one or two, and it didn't cause us to be in that improvement required status. But it is something that we want to address and improve upon. We want to increase all students to meet a minimum of 60% from the 52% and a targeted focus on African-American achievement from 43 to 60%. That was our student group that had the lowest score, and it's our largest population on campus. And the professional development and interventions are the same for that. But I would say as far as monitoring different groups, we're monitoring progress in multiple ways, which include grade level, or my understanding, grade level by student population or student group, by content. And that gives us various ways of looking at it to know how we need to meet the needs of the students, what other professional development we might need, what resources we might need. And the evidence of that is, again, implementation of the professional development through observations, walkthroughs, lesson plans, student artifacts, assessments, curriculum assessments, campus-based assessments, and ultimately, STAR. Thank you.
President Solans, members of the board, Dr. Kavassos, it is my pleasure to introduce the portion of our public hearing that focuses on three campuses designated as formerly improvement required. And I know that you'll want to join with me in celebrating their achievement of meeting standard and also to acknowledge their continued focus on improvement, as you will see tonight. I would like to introduce the principal of Newcomer Center, Kristy Streibach of Sam Houston High School, Mr. Fernando Benavides, and of Webb Elementary, Guy Rosales. These three leaders, you will be hearing from them shortly on their targeted improvement plans. All of these campuses continue in the school improvement system. They are supported by resources, coaching, and access to a professional service provider. They work with area superintendents. But without those professional service providers, they would not be able to do the work that they will continue to do. And so I do want to acknowledge each of those providers and also to introduce the one that's here tonight, Dr. Charlotte Paramore. Dr. Paramore has served Newcomer Center. Dr. Jackie Jenkins serves Sam Houston High School. And Joe Bob Aniston serves Webb Elementary. Dr. Jenkins and Ms. Aniston couldn't attend tonight due to the weather, so. What you have already seen, hang on just, oh, there we go. What you've already seen, hang on a second. There we go. You've seen a slide that looks very similar to this one. This slide right here illustrates that alternative schools are on a different accountability standard than our traditional high schools and junior highs and elementaries. Newcomer Center is an alternative campus. And so their target for index one is 35. Their index two student progress measure is seven. Closing the gap, index three is 11. And they also have an ELL progress measure in the subject area of reading there. And then index four, post-secondary readiness, is 45. Okay, Sam Houston High School and Webb Elementary are, fall under the traditional school standard level of achievement. And you've seen this slide before. Mr. Benavides will talk with you in greater detail about this. He will be talking a lot about, or some about index four, post-secondary readiness. And there are four components that high schools have to meet with regard to post-secondary readiness. And so this slide just illustrates that, that index four. You've seen these, this slide before, so I will just illustrate, I just have it in here to illustrate that there's one difference between formerly improvement required and improvement required. And that is that our plan does not have to be submitted to TEA, only if it is requested. Formerly improvement required campuses still do quarterly reviews. I participated in one of those today with Newcomer Center. And they examine their data, and they create the targeted improvement plan, but it does not have to be filed with the state unless the state requests it. If a formerly improvement required campus were to not meet standard, then they would go back into school improvement as a year-one improvement required school. However, when they meet standard, as we know that they will do again this year, there are no sanctions that are required. And they would be, they would, should exit the school improvement system at that point. Okay, it is my pleasure to introduce Kristy Streibach, principal of Newcomer Center.
Good evening, President Solans, members of the board, Dr. Kavassos. I'm going to share with you our good news and hopefully continued good news. Here's our accountability rating for 2015 school year. We fell into improvement required in index one and three. And we were at 14 on index one. We gained 44. I'll zip you through that. Oh, it's going backwards. In index one, we grew 44 points to reach the 58. You see there. Index two, we grew by 22 points, even though we only needed one or the other. In index three, we grew by 13 points to go from a 2 to 15. And then in index four, we grew by 20 points from a 78 to a 98. Index one, of course, they look at all tests taken. And index three, they only look at our reading scores because the others, math, science, social studies are all STAR L tests. And so they don't look at those. They only look at our reading, which is our pressure point at Newcomer because we have a lot of students that come to us with what's called SIF, Significant Interrupted Formal Education, meaning that they've been unschooled for quite some time, maybe haven't been in school. So we get kids that we're getting for the first time. We also, in order to qualify for Newcomer, for those of you who may not be as familiar, you have to be a first or second-year student new to the country. Sometimes a student may have been in here first grade, went back to their home country, now they're back. We consider them second year, but it's like brand new all over again. So there's just showing, demonstrating the growth that we made at Newcomer. And here, we just, you know, we want to show it as many times as we could. If you look at system safeguards, there's not a difference with an alternative school. They want every school to meet 60, which, you know, as you can tell, being a school that's alternative campus and our students don't, aren't fluent in the language, that was a big mountain to climb. But it's one we will continue to climb to make sure that we're getting our kids literate where they need to be so that we can, that's going to be one of those points that we continue to work on always. If you look at the second part, we had to meet participation. And we always test 100% of our kids to make sure that everyone's, you know, being treated equally. Our improvement plan, we stuck with just two goals. Some of the things that worked well for us last year were double-blocking our courses, that more time in the classroom for our kids. They need that time to acquire and practice their language and learn to read. And we also had really heavy, heavy, heavy on literacy in all many different forms. So goal one was to increase the percentage of students meeting Phase N1 satisfactory standard on all subjects from 58 to 61. So even though we only have to meet a 35, we're still going to try to continue to make growth in that area. And so what we're going to do is basically continue with our formative assessment, assess and adjust, assess and adjust. Because many of our kids come to us with, we know nothing about them. We have no background on them. So we have to figure out where they are and teach from there. So we will continue to do that with our students. The interventions again will be implement targeted formative assessment. We have the core instructional specialists that come in very frequently from bilingual ESL and the four core subject areas, as well as technology. And they work with us very frequently on helping us maintain the same scope and sequence and that type of thing, because sometimes we lag in that a little bit because we're trying to spend so much time in acquiring the language. So they're helping us keep on pace and keep the rigor and all the things we need to do. We will continue to do this through PLCs. And we, as administrators and as a team, will continue to go in, monitor, and adjust. So that's just kind of our mantra. We go in, look at what's happening, adjust to make immediate action. Goal two, increase the percentage of students meeting STAR ELL progress measure in reading from a 44 to a 50 in order to demonstrate continuous improvement in our reading performance. We're going to develop and implement an intentional framework of sheltered instructional strategies into the planning and delivery of classroom instruction. The interventions there will be to use a very specific framework of sheltered instruction where we will have non-negotiable practices in the classroom of student and teacher behavior. So we're just going to be real strategic on what we do. Provide teachers with professional development on sheltered vocabulary development, which promotes targeted teacher and student classroom behavior. And we, as administrators, will come into the PLCs and work with, as well as a curriculum specialist, to train and adjust as we see necessary. And that's it.
Good evening, President Solans, Dr. Kavassos, members of the board. I'm here to present our campus data as a formerly improvement required campus. And so we'll start off with our accountability rating for 2015. We did meet standard. And so we're very proud of that, of all the hard work that our teachers and our structural support staff worked to get. This slide here shows our performance index summary, just the number of points that we could have, the maximum points earned, and then what we've earned, and then what the index score was. For index one, which is the student achievement index, we did score, we improved by one point from 62 to 63. Index two was not rated the previous year, so that's non-rated. But we did meet that particular index, 17. The target score was 15. For index three, closing performance gaps, we improved two points from the previous year, meeting that goal of a target of 31, but we scored 37. And then one we're very proud of, that we did not meet the previous year, was index four, and that's the post-secondary readiness score, where we improved about 10 index points. We missed it by two the previous year. So, and when you break down that particular score or that particular index for post-secondary readiness, high schools are, that's broken down in four different parts. Where we're looking at EOC performance, and if there's a college readiness measure there. But we did improve by two points for EOC testers. Then we look at our graduation rate, which we didn't make any progress. It was still at a 19.9. But our plan, we did improve by two points. That's the number of students that are recommended or distinguished planned, and that is our college readiness, again, indicator. And then finally, we improved six points for post-secondary component score there from the previous year. And that measures a performance on ACT, SAT, and a course, and then successful completion of our CT coursework. In the area of system safeguards, we did not meet the system safeguard of 60% or higher for, in the all category for reading and math, African-American, Hispanic, white, are economically disadvantaged, special ed, and ELL. We did meet the participation, oops, sorry. I thought that was a little square there. But we did meet 100% of our participation status, meaning that better than 95% of all our students were tested in those areas. So we know where we need to improve to meet the system safeguard. Also, an area that we do struggle every year with is that's our four-year graduation rate. Of course, the state does look at the, whatever's better, the four or the five. And our five-year is always higher. We work really hard for those kids who didn't meet it within the four-year rate, and we continue to work with them even today. And so you see the different groups that we scored the lowest. For our targeted improvement plan, in addition to all the other things that we're doing, this is just, but this is just a focus area that we're looking at. We'll continue to do the work that we did the previous year. But our campus improvement team, which consists of our core content-level leaders, our instructional coaches, our system principals over those content areas, our deans of instruction, and of course, our professional service provider, Dr. Jenkins, we came up with this annual goal that we're going to work toward meeting. And that's helping our English language learners, our ELLs, to have a 65% pass rate for English I and English II EOC for the first administration. Our strategy is to implement a cohesive system of continued implementation of sheltered instruction, or SIOP, which stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. And it's a model that helps our English language learners acquire the English language along with content skills as well. And we do that by intentional listening, speaking, reading, and writing strategies in those areas. And it's very intentional work. But that'll include professional learning, collaborative planning and data analysis, instructional support, and a structured approach to monitoring this instruction. In the lesson cycle, we'll monitor lesson plans, view, review PLC minutes, again, with the intentional planning of using our SIOP strategies. And again, additional evidence would be sixty-five percent or more of our ELL students are meeting those course requirements, passing in all core subject areas, as well as sixty-five percent or more of our ELL students that are meeting curriculum assessment standards. Currently, we have over a thousand ELL students and many of the newcomer students coming directly to Sam Houston High School. And that is our plan. Thank you.
Good evening, President Solans, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. My name's Guy Rosales. I'm the principal over at Webb Elementary. Today, I would like to share with you our targeted improvement plan, want to give you an overview of our campus. Webb Elementary is a campus, an elementary campus that services pre-K through sixth grade students. We have approximately eight hundred students. Within our students, we've got over ninety-two percent of our students are economically disadvantaged. We also have sixty-seven percent of our students that are English language learners, and we have a very high mobility rate at almost twenty percent. What I do want to share is that when we look at our accountability rating for 2015, we met the standard. As we look across indices, two, student progress, we look at closing the gap, index three. And four, post-secondary readiness, we did meet the standards in those areas. We did fall slightly short as we look at index one, which is student achievement, but I feel like we're well on the track to, well on track to do what we need to do going forward. We'll take a closer look at the state system safeguards. As we look across, again, the standard for, or the target for reading was sixty percent. Webb came in at sixty-one percent, so we did meet the standard in that particular area. As we look at our student groups, we did fall slightly below when we look at our African-American population, our special ed population, and our English language learners. We did not meet the standard for writing and science. As a leadership team, we have assembled, again, a targeted improvement plan, and I want to share that with you. We have two goals that we've put together. Goal one addresses index one specifically. We're looking at a minimum of sixty percent of all students will meet or exceed the passing standard on STAR reading. In addition to that, like I said, as we look at last year, we had sixty-one percent, so we'll continue to move forward. How we're going to do this, we're looking at obviously professional development and interventions. We've already hit the ground running. We've sent our staff out to Kilgo, Margaret Kilgo training, and they've had the opportunity to do data analysis training where they looked at specific student performance down to the TEAC level. We're also pushing out literacy development as we look from K through six, and our professional learning communities are enhanced and very intentional and deliberate. We're continuing with a focused intervention instruction. Basically, we're taking an hour block out of every single classroom where we're dedicating our resources to addressing those particular performance gaps. We're utilizing iStation, utilizing leveled literacy intervention, and small group tiered instruction. We'll continue to work with ongoing data analysis through bi-weekly PLCs and pushing out to extended half-day PLCs. There's a strong collaboration between our special ed department and our general ed to ensure that we're addressing this particular group of students. Evidence of effective implementation, this will do through practices learned in professional development. We'll continue with walkthroughs, lesson plans, collecting student artifacts, literacy folders, writing samples, in addition to student assessment, district curriculum assessment, campus basement comment assessment, and continue our work with PLCs. Again, student progress monitoring, data analysis, instructional planning, collaboration, goal setting, and very intentional with our instructional rubrics. And one of our final measures, of course, will be 2016 STAR data. As we look at the second portion of our goal, goal two is addressing, again, index one, sixty percent of fourth grade students will meet or exceed the standard in STAR writing. Again, we're going to do this very intentionally through professional development interventions. We've hit the ground running with Kilgo data analysis, and we've done this across subject areas. One of the things that we've been very, very intentional about is empowering writer workshop, which is a very intensive training for our teachers to help support the curriculum and ensure that we're able to deliver what we need to deliver to students. Again, more PLC development, focused intervention that you will see, istation, which addresses the reading and the writing portion. And we're also incorporating some materials, including motivational writing resources for small group instruction. On the writing side, we're going to be very deliberate about scoring of student compositions with a common rubric so we have consistency amongst the campus. And of course, analysis of revising and editing results. And very similar to what I've described before with continuation of lesson plans, walkthrough data, student artifacts, planning collaboration, instructional rubrics, and 2016 STAR data. Thank you for your support. Any questions?
Well, is there any more presentations? Okay. We do not have any comments cards from the audience this evening. Trustees, I would remind you that we have two items for this particular project on the agenda this evening. This is the public forum part, and then there will also be an action item. I'm going to recommend that we move the action item up to the first action item this evening so that the principals may have safe travel home in this weather. So I would like to take just a moment of privilege and on behalf of the entire board, thank our principals for joining us this evening. As trustees, we most certainly are on the same team, and we applaud and celebrate your successes, and we also share in your focus on student achievement every single day. We are one team. We appreciate your time this evening and your hard work and determination each and every day, and appreciate your work and your time and the tremendous effort in putting together these plans for student achievement for this current school year. Now trustees, if there are other comments for the public forum section, we'll take it now, or we will have another opportunity in just a moment for action items. Looks like we'll move it, move all the comment to the action item section. Very good. Then, the public hearing on targeted improvement plans for improvement required campuses, Adams Elementary, Berry Elementary, targeted improvement plan for the second year improvement required campus, Wembush Elementary, and targeted improvement plans for formerly improvement required FIR campuses, Newcomer Center, Sam Houston High, and Webb Elementary is now closed. Thank you. So before we get to the action items, we do have just ordinarily an open forum for agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, I do not have cards for an open agenda, open forum. Very good. So then we will move on the agenda to action item B, which is back to this project, targeted plans for improvement required campuses. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solans, and we recommend that the board approve the plans as presented by the principals.
Are there trustees with comments?
I move that we accept the administration's recommendations.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Hibbs and a second from Ms. Walton. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Hibbs?
I would like to say wow for the schools, the newcomers at Wembush and Sam Houston, what you've done there, tremendous, tremendous work in being able to turn around some, some difficult situations in a very short period of time, I might add. Many of you haven't been in your positions for very long, and I know that Ms. Pride, Ms. Rhodes, and Ms. Beaver, these are people to look towards. They, oh, I'm sorry, I was corrected. It's Webb, not Wembush. I do want to make sure that, that you know, these are the people to look towards, obviously, because they, they've already overcome, and they'll be a great ear to listen to, as well as I know you will reach out to the rest of the network of campuses that have similar challenges. And I expect to see great things this next year also.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Very well said. We saw many double-digit gains, and that was exciting to see in some very close razor-thin margins as well. So we appreciate you being here this evening. We cheer you on for your continued work and seeing no other lights. Could we, we have a motion on the floor, so if we could please vote. All trustees voting affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here this evening. Next on our agenda, we'll go back to action item A and consider the approval to hold open forums on school boundary process for McNutt and Peach Elementary Schools. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solans. And this evening, we'd like to present to the board proposal to have open forums for boundaries. And Mr. Hill has a brief presentation about those boundary process and our request. Mr. Hill?
Yes, thank you. Good evening to board and superintendent. Again, here just to kind of give you a little brief update on where we are and to request permission to hold open forums on the boundary process. Again, boundaries are impacting Ellis, Larson, Sheridan, Rockmore with the building of Peach Elementary, and Amos, Bergen, Foster, Goodman, and Morton with the building of McNutt Elementary. Again, this timeline is just a repeat of what was presented earlier on. We are at November five, presenting to the board in November six, sending letters home upon board approval. November sixteenth through twentieth, scheduled to hold open forums. December third, we're coming back as a committee to take that information from the forums and see if it impacts the proposed boundaries. December tenth, committee coming to the board to present for final approval. And then December eleventh, upon board approval, sending those out to the community of the impacted campuses. The committee has met, and I just wanted to recognize and won't call all the names, but the principals of the campuses of the McNutt area and all of those that were serving on that committee, want to take a little minute, just appreciate them and thank them for their work, and it was very, very good dialogue. And here, here are those that served on the Peach Committee. Again, all of those principals were there, and they, they brought in staff members, I'm sorry, community members and parents from their, from their respective schools. Community forum dates are, and locations are there. These are prepared, and we'll send these out tomorrow, again, pending your approval this evening. We'll have two forums at each campus, one at four-thirty and one at six-thirty, or three-forty-five and five-forty-five, to make sure that we offer opportunities for those parents who are there early or those that may get off a little bit later at those campuses. And what you'll see here is a, it says McNutt Plan Two. When we were in the dialogue, we had two plans there. I didn't want to change the number of the plans because I wanted, you know, the committee to see, okay, we voted for Plan Two to take to the board, and I want a Plan Two to stay reflective of Plan Two when we're here. And so what you'll see here in the red drawing is the current boundaries of those campuses, and the color actually represents the proposed boundary for each one of those campuses. This plan here is reflected with the numbers on this screen right here. And so what we really wanted to focus on is to make sure that there's capacity in all of the schools as a result of the new boundaries. And if you look on the column on the extreme right, the capacity is always greater, in this case, than the EE six, which is early elementary through the sixth grade. All of them have more capacity than the projected enrollment at the campuses. So that's for Plan One with the McNutt and those campuses impacting McNutt. During the dialogue, this is some of the things that the committee discussed in detail. Speed of the traffic on Mayfield, there was some concern about that, and so that's something that I can potentially impact with working with the city. Crossing guards, the same thing there, and then sidewalks on Center Street. We see the construction that's going on there. So that's one of the things that the committee that wanted to make sure that we brought to the public here. Plan Two, again, with the Peach Elementary and those impacted campuses, again, you'll see the red lines represent the current boundaries and the colors represent the proposed boundaries. And so you'll see Larson on the east side of three-sixty, Ellis, Peach, Sheridan, and Rockmore, or Jones Academy there. Again, those campuses with the projected boundaries, again, would be in undercapacity, well undercapacity at those campuses as a result of these projected boundaries. And things that that committee wanted to get a little bit more discussion on are the academy application dates, and that academy, meaning the Jones Academy, ensuring spaces available at Sheridan, which, which we have that space available there. And then one thing with Larson and Ellis students, because they don't have a current boundary or they have a shared boundary, letting fifth and sixth graders remain at their campuses because of this shared boundary. They wanted that for consideration as well. And again, administration recommends holding the open forums to present these draft boundaries to the identified communities to seek more feedback and see how we can impact that feedback. We'll take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. So for this action item this evening, it's simply for the, to hold open forums for public input, so.
That's correct.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the administration's recommendation to have open forums regarding the boundary changes.
Very good. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Ms. Hudson and a second from Ms. Walton to hold open forums to present the draft boundary for the identified schools and seek community input regarding the draft boundaries presented, was what's written as their recommendation. Is it, is it, okay, that's good, that's good. Make sure, make sure, or stay true to the motion, so, very good. Is there further discussion, questions? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees voting affirmative. Thank you very much, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Now, where do we go to C? Next on our agenda is action item C, consider a resolution committing portions of the November thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen general fund balance. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solans. And last board meeting, we had considerable discussion about our Sam Houston High School master plan and our proposal, not only for that master plan, but also the funding recommendation. This evening, we bring back a resolution, or we bring to the board a resolution to commit those dollars for the Sam Houston master plan.
Very good. I'd like to thank administration for the comprehensive presentation of this proposal back on our October twenty-second board meeting. I understand there's no changes to the Sam Houston High School master plan. Are there trustees with additional questions or requiring additional information? Okay. Dr. Rasch?
The only question I have, not related to this plan, I'm in full support, is just a status update on the, I think I used for lack of better term demonstration project. If, whether Dr. Cavassos or Mr. Benavides can just let us know where that is, if we'll see it at the next board meeting, or?
So the discussion about the resources needed is something that's ongoing with Mr. Benavides, the principal, and area superintendent, et cetera. First step to that is to clearly identify and kind of show the resources that already exist, and then the additional resources that Sam Houston has. That's an ongoing work. Based on, on the approval of this plan, that's when it really kicks off, to determine the necessary resources that they will need moving forward. As an example, will they need another nurse and things like that? I think that those are discussions we're going to continue to have. I don't anticipate, at this point, bringing anything next board meeting related to that because we just approved, or the board just approved, an associate principal, and that was really the next level of priority that Mr. Benavides had identified. We'll keep reviewing that and bring it back as necessary.
Okay. Yeah, I was hopeful that, that we would have something presented before us, some type of a, a full plan so that we, we have all the, all the pieces fall into place for, for that campus, what we're about to embark upon tonight, as you mentioned, and, and moving forward, just to have it clearly, clearly in place and clearly known for us as a board, as well as for the campus administrator.
Certainly come back and show where we've added security guards, and we've added even teaching staff through Title I and things like that. If that's of an interest, we can do that. I think as we move forward with the expansion plan, then that's the discussion, is now if you have teacher planning areas, what are the needs? If you have a bigger facility, what are the needs and things like that? To me, that, that seems to be ongoing work, but maybe I'm, I'm not understanding the demonstration part of it.
Well, no, I think that's definitely part of it. I know at the last board meeting, I, I mentioned specifically, if there's immediate needs, let's hear what those are, and if we need to consider pulling, allocating some dollars, additional dollars even, out of the fund balance for additional dollars even out of the fund balance for that. I made the comment related to no places for students to sit at lunch, as an example, just if there's chairs needed, something as simple as that, but then going full into other human resource allocation, that type of thing.
And we can certainly review that. I think we've hit most of those areas of the most immediate need. I think the associate principal is probably the next level of priority there. We can certainly review those again, and if there are immediate needs, then we can certainly bring them back.
I look forward to it.
Okay, thank you. And for that type of analysis, it maybe would be appropriate to go through the finance committee for review if there's a staffing change or so forth.
President Solans, I think that would be appropriate. I think that we, that if there needs to be a review of, as we're doing this type of master plan overview on this campus, if whatever the additional needs that may be arising, we probably need to have a working list and identifying those and determining if anything's specific to the campus. I know that there's been mention of an additional nurse, those type of things, you know, as we, as, I think this is an ongoing effort that needs to be discussed. Obviously, Mr. Benavides and the Sam Houston campus has just, as we saw in our last presentation, was able just to come off of a, you know, a one-year plan, which, you know, we applied, so we want to make sure that we're supporting that because the numbers were still by the slightest of, you know, percentages. So we want to ensure that we have success there, and if there's anything specific to that campus that's, because there is some unique situations that we need to watch at. Dr. Raj, I think it would probably have been pretty aggressive in the two-week timeframe to really have a full-blown master plan of what we go forward, but I do believe we need to have those ongoing discussions between the principal and our administrative staff. And I think it just needs to be clear that from a board's standpoint, we want to make sure that Mr. Benavides has all of the resources that he needs to be successful, and I think that's what we're all striving for, is I believe the administration wants it to be.
And I can just say that those conversations exist very frequently with Fernando. In fact, I think they ordered some chairs as a result of an assistant principal that requested it recently. Associate principal, additional security guards, I mean, those things, they happen very frequently, as with all our campuses, to make sure they have the resources that they need. This additional master plan does give us another opportunity because the building footprint then will be expanded, the consolidation of students in one area, office space and things like that, different design. It gives us that other opportunity to review again the needs of this particular campus, and that's part of this process once this first step gets approved.
Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Solans. I'm glad to hear Dr. Cavassos say that this is regularly reviewed with all the campuses. And there were five other campuses here tonight that are facing some big challenges, and I would hope we would extend that to elementary schools as well as to Sam Houston.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Good conversation with the master plan started this, with this action item this evening. I think it does give us opportunity to examine these other demonstration projects, I think is what you referred to as, Dr. Raj, but certainly also for all campuses and for all students in the system, which I know is ongoing. Mr. Hibbs, we have an action item on the agenda. This came from the finance committee. Is there a motion?
Yes, President Solans. I move that we accept the resolution committing portions of the November 30th, 2015 general fund balance towards the, the funding of this project at Sam Houston.
Very good. And since that comes from committee, it doesn't require a second. Is there any further discussion or questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, please vote. The affirmative, the motion passes, and it looks like we will have a new master plan footprint at Sam Houston High School, Mr. Benavides. Very good. Move on to our next agenda item this evening is to consider the proposed termination and non-renewal of the term contract for Eric Carter. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Solans. I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation and to propose non-renewal and termination of Eric Carter's term contract, and further move that the record of this action reflect the following. Before voting on this motion, the board considered a draft of the letter of Eric Carter proposing the non-renewal of his term contract and termination of employment. The superintendent reviewed with the board the reason or reasons making his recommendation regarding the employee, and the board considered the reason or reasons and any other information provided by the superintendent, and that by passage of this motion, the board directs superintendent to prepare for the board president's signature, a final notice of proposed non-renewal of contract and termination of employment of Eric Carter, and ensure that the notice is delivered not later than November 13th, 2015. Directs that the notice of proposed non-renewal and termination of employment include the time limitations and procedure for requesting a hearing before an independent hearing examiner. Directs the board president to notify Eichelbaum, Wardell, Hanson, Powell, and Mel PC of this action and requests that office to contact and retain independent, and an independent attorney on behalf of the board if necessary, to advise the board concerning legal matters upon receipt of a recommendation from an independent hearing examiner. Authorizes Eichelbaum, Wardell, Hanson, Powell, and Mel PC to consult with the superintendent to approve the final notice of proposed termination of employment and to take whatever actions are necessary and proper to present the case in support of the proposed termination. And finally, directs that a copy of this motion be attached to the minutes of this meeting and the final notice of proposed non-renewal and termination of employment sent to Eric Carter.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Dr. Raj and a second by Ms. Hudson. Is there discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The motion passes. Thank you. We now move to our discussion action portion of our meeting this evening, and the first item on the discussion action section is to consider changes to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solans, and the board committee, community engagement.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Yes, the board's community engagement committee, consisting of myself, Mr. Hibbs, and Ms. Hudson, were tasked by this board to look at the CBOC's charge to potentially amend or adjust the charge to reflect the inclusion of students, students' participation, and how we would go about doing that and working that participation on the CBOC. And what you have before you is our recommendation as committee, this would be coming as a motion to amend the charge out of committee, that the change, I'll just read the one section, to the charge under membership, the committee shall be comprised of a maximum of 11 voting members, voting is the change, appointed by the board, and the rest of this is the ad, and non-voting student members consisting of the board's student, at least, student leader advisory board, SLAB members. And everything else on the charge is identical as what we have previously approved. After deliberation of certain situations and opportunities to have students engaged, we felt that this was the best opportunity to have student representation, thought it was a great idea to have student representation on the CBOC, and having our SLAB students involved is a wonderful opportunity for them for leadership, potential, and exposure. They have had committee participation experience in the past, and this is one way of solidifying or codifying that relationship a little bit more with us as their mentors to mentees and for them also in leadership to report back to this board on their thoughts and ideas and their participatory process with the CBOC. So with that said, I will open it up if anybody has any questions about that.
Dr. Raj, just for clarification's sake, is this for this current year or for beginning next year?
This would be immediate.
Okay.
Yes, and the current SLAB has been briefed about this potential change, and they're very excited to have that opportunity should we decide to go ahead and pass that amendment to the charge this evening.
Thank you. So do you have a motion?
That was in a form of motion.
And it's from committee and doesn't require a second. Is there further discussion or questions on the idea to add students to the CBOC? Seeing none, please vote. The motion carries, Dr. Raj, as presented. Thank you for the work that the, your committee put into this. I think it's excellent to have student voice in these committees, and other students themselves are very appreciative of the opportunity to participate in this manner. Thank you. So next, we'll go to our discussion action item B, which is consider the federal legislative agenda. Mr. Hogg, his flight has still in Arkansas, and so, Dr. Cavassos, I think we can still proceed.
Thank you, President Solans. And this evening, we've covered already with the governance committee, the federal legislative agenda or the proposed one. And so tonight, Ms. Powell will go over that. It's a brief summarized federal agenda that we're bringing forward.
President Solans, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. The governance committee expressed interest to us in setting forth a, an agenda, legislative agenda for federal matters. We received in the 2013-14 year about $39 million in federal grants through the ESEA entitlement and the IDEA Act, which is the Act that funds special ed grants. And so we, obviously, we received a significant amount of funding from the federal government, and decisions that are made in Washington have, can have some very significant impacts on our operation. So we felt like at this time, with Congress inching closer towards a reauthorization of the ESEA, which governs Title I and other related grants, that it was very important that we be on record with positions that are important to our district. And so Dr. Wertz, Dr. Barlow, and I worked together and worked then with the governance committee to draft a fairly succinct federal legislative agenda to state our positions. And so we've got it displayed for you this evening. The items fall into three broad categories, accountability, funding, and local control. Under accountability, we ask that our congressmen support measures that will allow campuses and districts to meet federal accountability requirements by meeting the state accountability requirements. Currently, with the system in place, districts have to meet a state accountability system, and then on top of that, there has been an AYP system or adequate yearly progress that tends to create a tremendous amount of confusion because it uses state data and expects to see a prescribed amount of progress from year to year in that system. And so that AYP system had reached a point where as of the 2013-14 year, all students were expected to be proficient in reading and math. And so the state of Texas has a waiver currently from that AYP requirement, but under reauthorization, should that requirement or something similar come back, we feel like it can create more confusion the way it exists today than it can create good and effective information. So we ask that we be allowed to meet federal requirements by meeting our state requirements as long as the state system measures content areas, including student groups. Then also asking for some, the ability for states and local districts to make decisions about double-testing students who are in eighth grade. So if a student is taking an advanced math class in eighth grade, they don't necessarily have to be double-tested by taking both the eighth-grade math test and an Algebra I test. And then allowing local control to decide which special ed students might take various alternative tests. Under funding, the primary request is that the federal government look for opportunities to increase our Title I and IDEA funding to meet federal mandates and incremental needs of students in special ed and to help us address the needs that the growing populations of economically disadvantaged and English language learners bring to us. And then asking for relief from maintenance of effort, which is a requirement that we spend the same dollar, same state and local dollars on special education each year as we spent the year before. You can never spend less on special education than you did the year before under the current MOE requirements, and that creates some specific and real challenges for us as our special ed population changes. And if you were, as an example, to want to make a significant one-time investment in a program related to special ed, and you do that in one year, you're now committed to spending those same dollars again in subsequent years, even if maybe what you were buying was a piece of equipment that you only needed to buy periodically. Then also, we've asked that our congressmen support measures that would prohibit the diversion of federal funds to private schools, keep those dollars in public schools. Under local control, we've asked that our congressmen consider measures that allow local districts to retain control over teacher and principal evaluations, and also that we retain control to address schools that do not meet accountability requirements. We drafted a cover letter to go with this and to have places for all seven board members to sign on that cover letter. We stated in there that it is a shared responsibility of parents, the local government, the local public school district, the state government, and the federal government to educate all of our students, and we all are accountable to the individuals that fund those systems and expect to receive adequately prepared individuals into the workforce. And so, but we do think that the federal government needs to be a partner and to allow us at the local level to make the decisions that are appropriate for our students and for our needs. And so with that, you know, we'll be happy to answer any questions or consider any changes that anyone wants to suggest to this agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Walton?
Yeah, Ms. Powell, thank you, Ms. Solans. I just had another thought. I know that there's currently federal legislation in the works to help educators who have also not only put money into their teacher retirement, but they've also contributed to the social security area. And currently, educators are not eligible for social security even if they've put in money, and they're trying to correct that with some federal legislation, as I understand it right now. Would there be maybe another chance on another memo to our legislators to maybe consider supporting that idea? Absolutely. We can look into that. Typically, also, that would be something we would want to address with TRS, I think, collectively, and how those two systems work together, but absolutely, we can, we can look into that. Thank you.
I think that, Ms. Powell brings up a good point, that that might be part of our state legislative agenda as well, to address it with TRS in combination.
Is TRS working on something like that also with, to the federal?
I don't know that.
I haven't seen anything. I don't know either, and I've been trying to keep up on things like that, but that would mean so much to so many educators, you know, who have had work and paid into social security. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Dr. Raj?
Thank you, President Solans. This is great, Ms. Powell, her jumping to the federal level. I think it's a very good, very good move. Couple of questions. One, you mentioned your participation in putting all this together. Did our legislative consultants give any advice, or are they out of that because they're on the state level mostly?
We did speak with our legislative consultants, and... We, we did speak with our legislative consultants and, and they were, they made a couple of tweaks, but very supportive of what we have here. There are other districts that are beginning to really take some positions at the federal level and even the Texas School Alliance that we're members of is working to make our positions known at the federal level because with reauthorization looming, this could potentially impact a number of us in some very significant ways.
Right, right. And working with our, our federal senators, congressmen, you mentioned cover letter with this agenda would be delivered. Would, would that be by our legislative consultants currently or by us individually as a district?
No, that would be delivered by us. We believe that we can arrange meetings with staff members at the very least in several of these offices and we'll continue to work through that. Our legislative consultants do operate and are registered at the state level, not at the federal level.
Right.
So that's something that we would need to, to seek out ourselves.
And maybe this is putting the cart before the horse too far out, would that potentially be a direction that we're headed to seek a consultant that does have federal registration so that we can target key committees at the federal level?
And I think that if that is something that the board wants to, to become very active in, then yes, we can, we can look to do that.
Just might happen. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Raj. Seeing no more lights on for additional comment, this is a discussion action item this evening. Ms. Hudson, would you like to?
Thank you, President Solans. Yes, I'd like to move that the board vote to adopt the proposed 2015-2016 federal legislative agenda as presented by Ms. Powell.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. And Ms. Hudson makes that motion from the committee, so it doesn't require a second. Is there any further discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, please vote. The motion carries. We have a legis, a federal legislative agenda. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell, for your work on that. We look forward to continued work as we follow the, in particular the ESEA reauthorization. So. So we now make it to our consent agenda portion of the evening. Are there items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? No? Ms. Powell?
Thank you, President Solans, board members, Dr. Kavasos. We actually do not have any bids on the consent agenda this evening. We have several easements, an interlocal agreement, a budget change, interim financial statement, and quarterly investment report among several other items. We do have donations to report this evening. We have received, and our schools have received donations totaling $69,939 and that brings our year-to-date total to $245,859.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. We certainly thank the community for their generosity and support with their donation and bids. I'm consistently with our district. We're blessed to live in a community that leans in and supports public education so generously. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda, please.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Raj and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Seeing no further discussion, please Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Next, we come to the open forum for non-agenda items. I do not have cards for speakers for the open forum for non-agenda items section of our meeting this evening, so we'll move straight ahead to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Solans, and this evening I'd like to share just a couple of information points about our district. First, Martin High School homecoming pep rally was extra exciting this year because head football coach Bob Waager was presented with the Whataburger Dallas Cowboys Coach of the Week for his week one of football season and there's Coach Waager. Seems really excited about that. He received a $2,000 donation from Whataburger and the Cowboys. Martin High School also won the High School Spirit Award from WFAA Channel 8 at the pep rally. So congratulations to Coach Waager and all of Martin High School. And next, we are excited and honored to learn that our district was one of five organizations nationwide, the only one in Texas to receive part of a nearly $2.5 million Principal's Path to Leadership Grant from the American Express and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. The grant was created to expand effective principal preparation. We're using our Emerging Leaders Program as, as a model and AISD will receive $330,000 over the next three years with this grant. So really proud of the work that we're doing with Emerging Leaders, our area superintendents, Dr. Wertz, and others that have been working with this program. Very successful. I recently enjoyed reading the book Not for Norman or Not Norman, A Goldfish Story. To recently at the Read for the Record Day at Key Elementary and I was joined by Polly and John and others, I read to a group of third graders and they had some very insightful questions like, why do we have to take the STAR test and we didn't have to take it in first and second grade and now we're in third grade, what's going on? And so I tried to answer those questions as best as I could. Butler Elementary's sixth grade, sixth grader Cole and his classmates had a big surprise earlier this month from Ecomen from the Arlington Parks and Recreation, that's actually a character right there, who visited the school. The sixth graders had an assignment to write hero letters and he wrote his letter to the Parks and Rec Department. Members of the Parks and Rec were there with sixth graders to tell them more about the whole park system. So we appreciate our partnership with the City of Arlington and the Parks and Recreation Department. Our Parent and Community Engagement Department hosted a wonderful faith-based pastoral luncheon recently on, on October 23rd where we were able to update our leaders from the faith base on many of the things we're doing in the district and the way that they've been able to help us with the AISD back-to-school kickoff and, and those events. We're very appreciative of our entire community, in this case in particular, our faith-based community who provide a lot of support throughout the district and I appreciate all of their work to helping us making sure that our students' needs are met. Last week I held a junior high student roundtable and those are the students that were represented. We had two from each junior high school, one seventh grader and one eighth grader. They had many important questions. They responded to some questions and then they gave us feedback. I was probably most pleased to hear from them with the question that, that was asked about, do they feel that their ideas matter in class? And an overwhelming majority of the students felt that their ideas mattered in class and that their teachers really valued their opinion and their thoughts about what, what they wanted to learn about as well. Very intelligent, sharp group of students that are in our junior high schools, so I'm very proud of them and, and able to spend some time with them. I'm scheduling a, a similar discussion with fifth and sixth graders and I'm sure that'll be very enlightening about what they think about school and how things are going. Last week was a week full of celebration for Red Ribbon Week and you see just some of those pictures there and Halloween-related activities. Ashworth hosted a vocabulary parade. Hill Elementary and Sam Houston High School, they performed Thriller from Michael Jackson. And several hosted events such as Mathaween, which is a mathematics exciting, exciting event, I'm sure, and science lessons with pumpkins and, and other contests that you see there on the screen. Finally, I'd like to encourage everyone to attend Opportunity AISD on Monday, November 16th at the PDC from 5:30 to 8:30. And everyone will have an opportunity to learn about our unique programs in our district from our collegiate high school, our CTE programs, our Fine Arts Dual Language Academies, our STEM Academy, pre-kindergarten, our FIRE Academy, et cetera, et cetera. You see a partial listing on the right-hand side of that announcement. We'll be making direct calls to parents and, and sending out information with students regarding Opportunity AISD. Encourage everyone to attend. There will be transportation from each high school that will be provided for parents that require transportation and we encourage students to come as well. We anticipate this will be a good event for our community and, and our district. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Are there board members with reports? Okay, I don't see any. So Mr. Secretary, oh, snuck one in there. Ms. Walton?
That was not quick enough for you. Thank you.
You have to be fast.
I thought somebody else might. I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed spending Sunday afternoon at the dedication ceremony for the new Vietnamese, the Vietnam War Memorial that's now in Veterans Park. I know we, Dr. Raj and Ms. Hudson were, was also there. It was a lengthy and very interesting ceremony and if you haven't seen the new statue out at Veterans Park, you need to go do that. Wednesday, I went back to school with my student leader advisory board member Jackie Garcia and attended classes with her at Lamar High School. I was a little nervous. It'd been a long time since I'd been to high school and, but I really enjoyed my day. I even made it through her physics class, which was a very great example of enter, all of the classes were, the teachers were amazing and doing a lot of interactive type activities with their students and not, with each other and with technology and with all kinds of wonderful stuff. And I just have to thank Principal Andy Hegman out there for this great job he's doing with the teachers and kids out at Lamar High School. And then last Thursday, I enjoyed a performance of the Lamar Orchestra. They had their fall concert. Congratulations to all of those fine students who performed pieces written by Holst, Shostakovich, and Elgar. It is just amazing that our high school orchestras can perform pieces by major composers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hibbs?
Just got a thing from ESPN that's interesting. I figured I'd keep everybody up on this. Nate Carnes, who is a Martin High School graduate, he went seven and five with the Tampa Bay Rays this year with a 367 ERA. He led all rookies in innings pitched in strikeouts. He was just traded in a six-person trade from Tampa Bay to Seattle Mariners. I laugh because this is a great kid that graduated from Martin and he beat Texas twice this year. So now we're gonna have to face him in our division the entirety of this next year. So we wish him the best, obviously.
There, there is no secretary.
There are no secretary notes that I've taken tonight that need to have action on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Ms. Hudson?
Thank you. In addition to some of the events that were mentioned by Dr. Kavasos and Ms. Walton, I had an opportunity to go see the premiere performance of our kinder cohort at Rockmore Elementary and the Jones Academy. And it was this marvelous production with every kindergartner in the program on the stage, singing and dancing and using props that they had clearly made in art class. And I think the most striking thing was that every child up there was just absolutely having a blast. It was a really fun evening. It was part of their literacy evening, so I found that very enjoyable. I also got to go back to high school this week and went to Sam Houston with my slab student Julie Tran and I got to attend the Spanish IB class and also an IB history class. They were challenging and rigorous and interesting and I thought, a little bit I wanted to go back to high school. It was also Orange Chicken Day in the cafeteria. I highly recommend that you visit on Orange Chicken Day. It was a pretty delicious lunch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. I'd like to mention that Ms. Mays and I were happy to represent the board at the Asian American Chamber of Commerce where the board and the administration received special acknowledgement for our work with the Asian American Chamber and, in particular in the area of student achievement. So we were certainly glad to be there. It sounds like a lot of great events that we've been to and many more to come, but it looks like we've come to the end of this one. And so this meeting, with no action items on the secretary's report, this meeting is adjourned at 9:16. Thank you.